Local issues bringing people of different beliefs, history, ages, different demographics, all of our different precincts, all eight of them, professions, and I dare say political parties and independents, all together in one space. Town meeting procedures and our town's character fuel this body to be a place of continual town growth and synergy. From those in this auditorium, to those in the cafeteria, to everyone watching on WindCam, this is Winchester's legislative government that is of the people, by the people, and for the people. Town meeting requiring 100 members for a quorum and having 123 in attendance, and your moderator sees that there is sufficient number of members present to permit us to open our 2023 Spring Town Meeting, and it is so declared. To our Town Meeting members, welcome back. It is so great to see all of you. And to our newest elected members, a very warm welcome, and our sincere thanks for your decision to serve our community and represent your precincts. During our break, I hope that you will meet with your precincts and introduce yourselves. It will be a social break this time. We do not have business before us at the precincts. We'll be breaking after Article One. Welcome also to our town staff, members of boards and committees, town consultants, and article presenters, as well as residents and other visitors who have joined us tonight. Welcome one and all. I am Heather Von Mary, your Town Meeting Moderator. For the business of the meeting, I am to be recognized as Madam Moderator. We are joined by town staff, the town clerk and clerk of the meeting, Ms. Mary Allen, to my right, also with us in the auditorium and cafeteria is staff from the town clerk's office. Those were the individuals who checked you in. Sitting with the select board right in front of me is our town consul, Mr. Jay Tellerman of Mead Tellerman Acosta, our previous acting town manager, and happy to say, our town manager, Ms. Beth Rudolph. Currently not sitting up front, but will probably be joining us, Mr. Mark Tugood, our Assistant Town Manager, our Winchester IT Director, Mr. Matthew Griffin, who sits in the front and supports all the speakers with their technology, Mr. Chris Conway and staff is all part of the DPW and is our facilities coordinator, Mr. Drew Chase is behind me from Option Technologies, and he runs our electronic voting, and of course, Mr. David Gautier and all of his talented crew from WindCam up in the back. We have Dane Kayla Maeve and a student volunteer, Noah Malkavi. Thank you all for helping us get this meeting up and running. We will now move to the oath of office. To all of our newly elected Town Meeting members and also reelected Town Meeting members, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear, solemnly affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties of the office of the Town Meeting member to which you have been elected in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the charter and bylaws of the town of Winchester? Thank you. You may please be seated. Next on our agenda, we'll highlight some important procedures and practices in place employed in service to you, the meeting, to provide a fair and orderly process to facilitate your important decision-making. To our longstanding members, we have many new members among us this evening, and so it is important we take this time to review these items. As a refresher, if a member wants to raise a point of order, if they feel that there has been a breach of parliamentary procedures to the moderator's attention, they are to rise their feet and say, "Excuse me, Madam Moderator, I have a point of order." As a reminder, we are to never attack or make allusions to the motives of members of this body. There is no tolerance during this meeting for inappropriate language or name-calling that is offensive to any member of our community. This would be the means available to members to gather my attention if there is a concern related to parliamentary procedures, or you wanted to bring my attention to inappropriate conduct. On a side note, members should try to avoid mentioning another member's name at all times. Do not interrupt or attempt to speak to people at the microphone or the podium. It is parliamentary procedure that all communication is to be done through the moderator. It is recognized that it is a formal process and can feel unnatural at times, but is to maintain a safe and welcome environment for all. We must bear in mind in this meeting not only our personal interests, but also those of our community as a whole. Moving on, if the environment is not meeting your needs to access the content of this meeting in any way, including the temperature, noise, or ability to see the projector, please rise to your feet and notify the moderator by saying, "Excuse me, Moderator, I have a point of privilege." Points of order and points of privilege, you are allowed to interrupt a speaker to gather my attention. Next, you can ask the meeting to consider move to a vote in between speakers. Members should use this if you feel that you are beginning to hurt sufficient information and debate to be an informed voter. This means you are asking your fellow Town Meeting members to indicate by vote whether they too are informed enough on the issue to feel comfortable voting. This is not intended to be a motion to be disrespectful to those who want to continue to speak, but a way to make your own needs heard. To gather the attention of the moderator for this purpose, you are to rise to your feet and say, "Excuse me, Madam Moderator, I wish to move the vote." You are to do it in between speakers, not during. If at any time a member of our body is unable to rise to get to the microphones or to gather my attention, please raise your hand, and I will do my best to get a microphone to As we go forward, all our new members, I will do my best to try to outline what is going on as we move through the meeting for our newest members. Hold on tight, this can actually be an adventure. We will continue our meeting tradition with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Girl Scouts will be doing a flag ceremony and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. For those members who would like the option to join me, please rise.
Color guard attention! Color guard advance! Color guard, display the colors! Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post the colors! Color guard, salute your flag! Color guard, retreat! Color guard, dismiss!
Thank you. You may please be seated. Finally, before I move on to the preliminary motions, I want to take a moment to thank all the members of our community who have retired from the roles of volunteer leadership in our community. As announced at the last meeting, Mr. Jay Gill of the Department of Public Works has retired, and Mr. Bob La Basier started on March 20th. Mr. La Basier has 18 years of experience as a DPW Director and PBD in Middleton. Welcome to Town Meeting. In addition, Chief Tustin, as announced previously, with 37 years of service to our community, his last day is April 28th. If you have a chance to catch him before his retirement, please thank him for his service. It is an honor to announce that Mr. Stephen Osborne has been appointed as the town's next fire chief. Captain Osborne, to be Chief Osborne, has worked for the Winchester Fire Department for 28 years and will be taking over on April 29th. It is with great sadness to inform the body that retired Officer Jasper Osaro Jr. passed away last week. Mr. Osaro was hired as a police officer for the town in 1966 and retired in 1981. Thereafter, he was hired as our hearing officer in 1985 and has since been serving in that position. He served our town for over 53 years. Your moderator kindly asked for a moment of silence in his honor and in his memory. Thank you. In closing of my opening comments, we have come together as a civil assembly, as a community, in a tradition that is older than the Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about a community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that this is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and high as our own. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Moving on to your preliminary motions. So for those who have it electronically, congratulations. You are now in the year 2023. Hi, however, like the paper copy. So it is the Green Booklet. It was out front. You were offered it when you first came in, and it's also available online for those who are using electronic versions at the Town Meeting's website. So, moving to page one of your Town of Winchester 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting Articles, Motions, and Comment Booklet. Also, I will be referred to as the Green Booklet throughout the meeting. It is moved and seconded that the following preliminary motions be adopted as placed on your screen and as also on page one of your Green Booklets. This does not include the consent agenda. Please note for number six, we will not be meeting on Thursday, May 4th due to a conflict in the town, and will continue on Monday, May 8th, 2023, if needed. We are aiming to complete this work before us in three evenings, possibly less pending on this evening's adventures. Are you ready for the question? Seeing no one rise, a vote of... Majority of the members present is required. The question is on the approval of the preliminary motions shown on your screen as printed in motion book on page one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to the consent agenda. This is also on page one of your booklet. It is moved and seconded that the 2023 Spring Town Meeting advance for consideration Articles 2, 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 16, and 22 through 25, and take action on such articles without debate on any of such articles with the specified motions as set forth in this motion book, provided that upon the request of five voters at this meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion, or otherwise at the moderator's discretion, an article shall be removed from the consent agenda and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course of business at this town meeting. As a reminder, Town Meeting members, a consent agenda is used when the opposition feeling is that it is useless to oppose or discuss the matter in great depth, and they simply acquiesce. Agenda items on the consent agenda tend to be simple actions or one with no opposition or very minimal opposition. However, if you have any questions on the consent agenda, debate is not permitted. Now is your time to do so. Any Town Meeting members with questions on the consent agenda? Seeing no member rise, I believe that you are ready for the question. I will try it as a vote first, and if not, we will move to our clickers. Two-thirds vote is required on this. The question is on the approval of consent agenda is printed in your motion booklet on page one and also on the screen before you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Moving on to Article One, page two of your 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting Motion Booklet. It is moved and seconded that the report of the town officers and finance committee be received and filed. Further on the article, to begin with, we will start with the Select Board. I believe on behalf of the Select Board is Mr. Rich Mucci, the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for the opportunity to address Town Meeting. I would like to start by recognizing a few individuals tonight. I want to first thank Mariana Gulaboff for his six years of service on the Select Board and all his work he did for the town, having retired this spring. So, thank you, Mariana. I wanted to also introduce Michelle Pryor, who is our newest member, who really needs no introduction to this body, but she comes with a wealth of knowledge and experience, and we welcome her to the Select Board, and we look forward to working with you, Michelle. As many of you know, the municipal side is lean. Currently, we typically do not have assistant directors and lack redundancy in many departments. When a department head leaves, it usually falls on our staff to fill the void. I would like to recognize and thank all of our town employees who have stepped up and filled the void these past months while we continue to fill key positions in our municipal government. Thank you for all your service, and thank you for going above and beyond the call every day. I especially want to publicly thank De'eb Jarius and Sally Dale for taking on an expanded volunteer role in the absence of a town planner. De'eb has devoted countless hours to keep many projects and studies on track, and really took on a second full-time job, even though he really didn't want to, but he did it, these past several months in the absence of a town planner. De'eb, thank you very much for all you've done. As Madam Moderator mentioned, I'm happy to announce that in December, the Board unanimously voted Beth Rudolph and appointed Beth Rudolph the next town manager of Winchester. Beth, along with the Assistant Town Manager Mark Tugood and Comptroller Stacy Ward, continued their dedicated service to our community and lead this town every day, so thank you. The Select Board has two articles that you will hear more about during this town meeting, but I simply ask you now to support Articles 14 and 18 when they come up, and I'll leave it to my colleagues to explain those articles later. So in the fall, I came before this body and told you that we would be back this spring with a financial plan. So where is it? Well, it's a work in progress. We started in January by holding budget sessions and holistic discussions about future budget needs and capital planning. These conversations may have looked different to some of you, but they were and will continue to be necessary policy brainstorming sessions. During these sessions, more questions than answers were provided. But from these policy discussions and conversations with other boards and departments, the town manager's budget emerged. Along with these budget policy discussions came discussions on evaluating the town's capital needs and how to fund them. While this process played out, staff engaged with Moody's and successfully maintained the town's AAA bond rating. Thank you to Stacy for leading that effort. So with five months of work under our belt, we continue to develop this financial plan with staff, other boards, and committees. Hopefully, you will leave this Spring Town Meeting seeing progress and an understanding that the work continues. One big piece is getting capital sailing again. In the short term, the Select Board continues to ease the town's capital needs through the use of ARPA funds. 3.6 million has been committed to date, and 3.18 of allocated ARPA funds remain. Recent highlights include the funding of the Town Hall and Library Windows Schematic Design, school and municipal playground evaluation, Town Hall lighting engineering, and we also voted to fund an update to the VFA software for real-time use. VFA is a software the town has had a license for that has not been updated since 2017, and you've heard a little bit about it, especially if Chris Nixon talks about school-related projects. The cloud-based software provides an inventory of all of our facility capital systems and uses this data as a forecasting tool so managers can efficiently gather and maintain facility-conditioned data. This data can then be used to make budget decisions about maintenance and capital planning needs, short and long term. A few months ago, the town manager hosted a demonstration of VFA, and I think everyone present was excited about its possibilities. So moving forward, over the next several months, the Select Board will continue to look to use ARPA to address short-term capital needs. You will also begin to hear about the Community Preservation Act, a dialogue and hopefully successful implementation of this important community act. Vice Chair Thea Brady and Michael Bentencourt will be leading this effort. We will look to take the guesswork out of capital planning by using tools such as VFA as a guide for planning and decisions. I did also want to provide a couple of other updates. I'm happy to report that the years of hard work in the area of affordable housing are starting to pay off as several units go online this year. Information is now available for Sanctuary West, which is at 416 Cambridge Street, and Sanctuary North, 25 River Street, with lotteries to be held in June. That would produce 24 units of affordable housing on Cambridge Street and 37 units at River Street. In addition to the affordable units, these developments will add 242 rental units of housing starting this fall. The Board also continues to work on the Melantin-Washington Street development and the Civicco Waterfield Lot Development, both currently in their due diligence and planning stages. Recently, the North Reservoir Dam work was completed that this body funded, and also our improvements to the transfer station are ongoing with the demolition of the old incinerator ongoing these next few weeks. Finally, we are about to kick off another burdensome season of construction in our streets and neighborhoods. In many ways, we are lucky that utility companies and state agencies are investing in the infrastructure of our community. It will allow us to move Winchester forward in ways many communities cannot. Considering the big picture, hopefully you share the Select Board's excitement for these projects in the direction the town is heading. An engaging, inclusive community that continues to grow while maintaining its historic charms, high-quality town services in a fiscally responsible manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further under Article One, we will hear now from the town manager, Ms. Beth Rudolph.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and Town Meeting members. I'm pleased to come before you this evening to provide an update on various town initiatives and provide an overview on the town's financial outlook. It's my first report since being appointed as permanent town manager, and I bring with me 18 years of experience in Winchester, serving as the Assistant Town Engineer, the Town Engineer, and most recently, the Acting Town Manager. I'm honored to serve the community in this expanded role and look forward to working with our residents, Town Meeting members, town staff, and our volunteer boards and committees. Since we met last fall, voters approved funding for a debt exclusion override to complete the replacement of the Lynch Elementary School, as well as a $400,000 general override to fund the capital stabilization fund. The town has moved forward with a number of important initiatives, as Select Board Chair Rich Mucci just mentioned, regarding affordable housing and capital projects, as well as development of the town manager's FY24 financial plan and three-year financial projections, which I'll discuss later in this presentation. As mentioned at the start of the meeting, the town has experienced significant staffing changes over the past several months with the retirement of our long-term DPW Director Jay Gill and the upcoming retirement of our fire chief Rick Tustin. I'm pleased to announce that the town has hired Mr. Robert La Basier as our new DPW Director, and that we'll be welcoming Captain Stephen Osborne as our fire chief at the end of this month. Please join me in welcoming both gentlemen to our community. The town is currently hiring for a new town planner with the loss of Brian Zakelli earlier this year, and for a new town engineer to replace myself in that role. We hope to have the positions filled in the coming months. I also expect that we may see retirements in the Treasurer's Office and Building Department in the upcoming year as well, so we have a lot of changes happening on the municipal staffing side. Additionally, the town manager's budget submitted to the Finance Committee in February included funding for newer expanded staff initiatives in the IT Department, Health Department, Building Department, and Treasurer's Office. These proposals will help our municipal government further initiatives related to technology, communications, customer service, and health and safety. In September 2022, the Department of Revenue certified the town's free cash balance at $16.74 million. This amount was reduced by approximately $1.69 million as a result of appropriations at Fall Town Meeting, leaving a balance of $15.05 million, which translates to a current operating reserve of $15.11, per the Comptroller's most recent report that you received at table this evening. This spring, $786,528.14, to be exact, is being requested for use on a variety of projects and to supplement the FY23 operating budgets for several departments. If all the Articles pass, the remaining total unappropriated free cash balance will be approximately $14.27 million. The town of Winchester has historically maintained a AAA bond rating with Moody's Investor Services, and we are currently one of 14 communities in Massachusetts with this rating. Last fall, Moody's released a new rating methodology and changed their credit criteria and weighting factors, and Winchester was notified that based on this revised criteria, our rating had been placed under review. I'm pleased to report that in January 2023, Moody's reaffirmed the town's AAA bond rating, which is the highest rating possible and allows the town to borrow funds at the most favorable interest rates. I would like to thank our municipal staff, specifically Comptroller Stacy Ward, Assistant Town Manager Mark Tugood, and Treasurer Sheila Tracy for their efforts to understand the new Moody's ranking system and to ensure that Winchester was being judged fairly under the new criteria. In their credit rating opinion, Moody's noted that although the town has a stable financial position, our reserve levels are below average for the highest rating category. They further identified several factors that could lead to a downgrade, including a decline in available reserves liquidity as a percent of revenue, material increase in leverage or fixed costs, or a significant decline in our community's economic metrics. In March, the town borrowed over $30 million for various projects, including the first fees to fund the Lynch Elementary School replacement project. The next two slides are similar to ones that I showed at Town Meeting last spring. The first figure provides a summary of the historical free cash usage for the operating budget and other uses since FY2010. Note that the free cash usage for the operating budget in each fiscal year represents the amount needed to balance the budget in the subsequent fiscal year. So for example, in FY10, just over $2.2 million was used to balance the budget in FY11. Very little free cash was committed to the future operating budgets in FY19, 20, and 21 due to the operating override. On average since FY10, and not including the three override years, the town has used approximately $1.2 million in free cash annually to balance the budget. This slide provides a history of departmental turnbacks at the end of each fiscal year since 2012. FY20, 21, and 22 were outliers with higher-than-normal turnbacks during the height of the pandemic due to spending freezes, reduced overtime, and the use of CARES money for eligible pandemic-related expenses instead of budgeted departmental spending. FY17 was also an outlier due to debt service estimates. Excluding these three years, departmental turnbacks have averaged around $1.4 million annually. The town last approved an operating override in spring of 2019, which was available for use during the FY20 budget. At the time of its passing, the override was expected to last two to three years, and the full capacity was used to fund the FY22 budget. As part of the town manager's FY24 budget process, senior management developed a three-year financial projection for FY25 through FY27. The projections suggest that the town will be able to balance the FY25 budget through the use of free cash without dipping below our current operating reserve policy. However, the long-term projection shows that the structural deficit between revenue expenses will likely grow over the three-year planning horizon, potentially resulting in unsustainable pattern of free cash usage and possible reduction of operating reserves below our 6% minimum threshold. It's important to note, however, that the budget model should be considered a planning tool and not a foregone conclusion. We should expect that the decisions we make as a result of the model will change the trajectory of the model in future years. For example, a change to our health insurance provider in FY23 continues to yield savings in future fiscal years as a result of the cost savings generated by the plan change, and we continue to see those in the FY24 budget. As you heard at Fall Town Meeting, the town's capital needs outpace the availability of funding in the town's capital and building stabilizations funds. Each year, the town's capital planning committee works with municipal and school department to develop a five-year capital plan. Departmental requests for FY24 totaled $15.3 million from the Capital and Building Stabilization Fund, the Cemetery Trust Fund, and the Water and Soil Enterprise Fund, and the Capital Planning Committee was only able to support approximately $6 million in project funding needs. Projected requests for FY25 through FY28 total over $56 million. Senior management will continue to work the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and Capital Planning Committee to evaluate options to address this funding deficit. Finally, I wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the wonderful community events coming up this spring, which I don't think any of us take for granted after years of COVID closures and cancellations. The INCO Fair will be coming back to town in mid-May, and Town Day will be held on Saturday, June 3rd. Additionally, the Winchester Cultural District and Griffin Museum will be sponsoring the first annual Waterfield Festival this year, which includes... first annual Waterfield Festival this year, which includes the successful Photoville Fence Exhibit in the Winchester Town Center this summer, as well as several other outdoor art exhibitions in Winchester's Cultural District this spring and fall. They just had a very successful Earth Day event this weekend as well. And so I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with everyone in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under Article One, we will hear from the Finance Committee Chair. While they get it up and running, FINCOM is one of the few standing committees that are of Town Meeting. It is comprised of fifteen residences. Each year, they receive and review the proposed budget submitted by the Town Manager and thereafter meeting for many weeks and many times in those weeks. They then file with the recommended budget with the Office of the Town Clerk for distribution, which you should receive today, which is the Yellow Sheet and also the booklet. They also, this Wednesday, are having a hearing to go over that budget and take Q and A's as well. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, and good evening, everyone. Yes, don't forget, I'm going to do a very quick summary and then a much more detailed review of the FY24 budget in a couple of days. So, the projection for FY23 is looking like we're going to have strong operating reserves, about $21 million or 15%. Kind of stole this from the Comptroller's report. For FY24, we have $149 million total budget, and this year, I'm very pleased to announce with the work of the Finance Committee, many hours, and of course, all the time that's spent with the town staff, specifically with the Town Manager, the Assistant Town Manager, and of course, with the Comptroller, and many departments, boards, as well. It's a lot of input, and we do not need to use any free cash for FY24. We're proposing $149,894,244. That's an increase of 1.4% over FY23's budget and 6.1% over FY22's actuals. The new growth that the Finance Committee estimated is $1 million, and that's 23% lower than the FY23 estimate. State aid, which actually, that's a recent number from the 17th of April, is projected to be at $12.2 million, and that's two and a half percent above FY23's number. Local receipts at $10.4 million, thirteen and a half percent growth from '23, and that's based on higher transfer fees voted by the Select Board. Right, so the biggest categories are education at $63.6 million, basically, and then $2.3, about $2.3 million, that's 3.7%, I'm sorry, the variance is 2.27. And then that's 3.7% over FY23. Municipal is about $32.3 million, and that's $1.4 million above FY23 at a 4.6% difference. Undistributed, which should belong to all the different departments, someday we'll get to that and distribute it. It's $24.9 million, and the variance is $448,000 at 1.8%. Non-appropriated, 1.2, very small variance there, $50,000, 4.3%, and then that's a total of $121.9 million, basically a three and a half percent variance increase. We spent a lot of time, basically between February 15th, when the Town Manager hands us the budget, and when we presented, basically, the budget book that you see. There's a lot of differences, ups and downs, and updated numbers, as well as we also spent a lot of time talking to the different departments and committees to find out the details. So, those are the big drivers, the Police Department, that was just a correction, $134,000, that's the other big driver in here. I won't talk about all of them unless you want to hear about all of them, you come to the public hearing on Wednesday. All right, we have a three-year plan model that we do, and we put a lot of assumptions into it to see what the next three years might look like, when it's purely a projection. You can see that it tries to look at retirements, at revenue, at capital, at all the big drivers, and looks at possible turnbacks this year. We looked at the possible 1.2, 1.4, 1.6%. The 1.4 is the middle when we talk about, I'll show you the graph next. Again, a lot of factors that go into our projection, and of course, a lot of unknown factors that can impact that projection as well. And this is the result of all those different factors, which actually, except for the most, basically pessimistic, the red, everything else looks quite good. We basically are taking a middle projection. If you look in the budget book, there's tons of details on that middle projection, which means that through FY26, we still fall within the Select Board's range of at least 6% operating Just a brief mention on school enrollment. It looks like we did a lot of things to, all the time with the superintendent and the school committee research, and it looks like that the school enrollment is stabilizing in the last two years there. The, if you look at FY23's numbers, at my elementary level, the yellow is still a little bit on the lower side, but not much of a difference. And these are the committee members, and actually, we're short two committee members if anyone wants to join us. We're now down to 13. I appreciate everyone's time and all the committee's time, and we spent a lot of time going through this, and we work to look at all the finances of the town and be as responsible as possible to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. We are going to skip over the school committee. I will come back and explain why. But next up, we will hear from the Board of Health, their Chair, Ms. Ruth Trimarki. While they do that, the Board of Health is a three-person elected board and is responsible for the formulation and enforcement of rules and regulations affecting the environment There you go, it should work now.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Trimarki. I'm Chair of the Board of Health. I'd like to thank also Maureen Pimentel and Dr. Greg Sewicki, who should be here somewhere out there this evening, and the Director of Public Health, Jennifer Murphy, for their tremendous work over the past year. The Board of Health is a policy-setting body. We, thank you, Madam Moderator, I can skip a bit of this. We, our charge is to protect the environment and public health, and annually, we appoint the Director of the Public Health Department as our legal agent. Jen Murphy then goes out and runs the Health Department. She conducts the daily operations, enforcing regulations at the federal, state, and local levels. We want to thank also the staff, Gina Gray, our Administrator, Karen DeCampo, the Town Nurse, Morris Sullivan, and Dot Butler are in the Coalition for a Safer Community. Together, they ensure Winchester's safety for food, housing, water, septic system, and protect all residents, workers, and visitors, basically from cradle to grave in terms of public health. Highlights of what the Health Department has been doing over the past year is to monitor and report on infectious diseases. I draw your attention only here to COVID because eighteen people died last year in Winchester of COVID. The rest of the data, you know, it's available online. The Health Department provides a wide range of services, including immunizations for COVID, flu, shingles, pneumonia, screening for blood pressure, TB, inspecting all seventy-three restaurants in Winchester, if you didn't know, we have that many, and there are thirty-six separate regulations for each of those. The Health Department also oversees collections of hazardous waste, needles, and medications, controls for mosquitoes, ticks, rats, and geese. The Coalition for a Safer Community focuses mostly on mental health and mostly with our youth. Last year, they developed a brochure for mental health and substance use disorders and offered fifteen different educational events. Meanwhile, the Board of Health, we focused a lot on communications and outreach and engagement of the community. We developed a new Board of Health webpage. A year ago, there were three names on a white page. Now you can click on those names, and please do find our email and write to us. We love to hear from you. All the buttons on the left are for you to explore. All of that is new. We designed and delivered public health advisories such as this one. We adopted, for the first time, a public comment policy, which brings us into alignment with other boards in town. We adopted a reproductive health rights policy and had that translated into Mandarin and Spanish, and we adopted the Sustainability Department's heat response strategy. We also developed, for the first time ever, an orientation packet so that going forward over the years, there's continuity of information provided. We delivered webinars on the impacts of climate change on public health, monkeypox, and affordable housing. We've created the first-ever Board of Health Youth Volunteer Pilot Program with two fantastic Winchester High School students in non-voting seats. Areas demanding attention of the Board of Health moving forward is staffing. The Health Department's mandated responsibilities and expectations are growing in number and scope, but staffing remains static. So, the Board of Health works to provide as much as we can for resources to meet those mandates and to include some proactive initiatives as envisioned in the Massachusetts Blueprint for Public Health Excellence. This coming year, in addition to everything that has been happening, and of course, ongoing monitoring for COVID, we will be focusing on rat control, heat and extreme weather risks, ticks and mosquito-borne diseases, and PFOS, or what are called forever chemicals. I'll draw your attention to June 10th. It is our next hazardous waste collection day. Before I leave, I just want to touch on rats a little bit more. People may be aware that climate change with the warmer winters is causing an increase with pests, including rats, moving increasingly over the years from Florida up the East Coast. Every community in Massachusetts and beyond are dealing with this, and you may have been catching some of the news about the horrible rodenticides, which cause death of our raptors and can make our pets ill. So, the Board of Health, three weeks ago, authorized our Health Director to work with our Town Manager and with the DPW to explore a pilot program looking at alternatives. So, if you see around town these smart boxes that are placed here and there, they are not the same as the smaller rodenticide boxes. These, like Boston and Somerville are using them, the animal enters, is electrocuted, falls in a little elevator, is lifted up and dumped in a box, and then a ping goes to an iPhone on the company that we've contracted with, and they go around and collect the carcasses. So, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. If those boxes are for sale, please let us know. Moving on, we will hear from the Board of Library Trustees. I believe it's their Chair, David Coughlin. Maybe Angela's going to do it. Welcome, come on down. The Board of Library Trustees is a five-member elected body and has the custody and management of the library and all the property of the town related to the library. All money raised or appropriated by the Town Meeting or through gifts or bequests for its support and maintenance is expended by that board. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everybody. Surely, we have books on rats at the library. I'm Angela Murdo, the current Vice Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here to report on the status of the library. The trustees have always felt fortunate that the library is consistently well-supported by the town. Thank you for our current budget, which maintains our current level of operations and service, which therefore maintains the library's accreditation within the state of Massachusetts. The library continues to be a community center of resources, hosting meetings, lectures, crafts, and cooking groups, among other children and adult programs. Last year, the library welcomed more than 147,000 visitors, who checked out more than 644,000 items, a continued increase in circulation. Of course, there are books, eBooks, and audiobooks, and the Winchester Public Library also offers a library of things. Patrons have the opportunity to borrow Chromebooks, MacBooks, chargers, and even hotspots and Rokus. You might expect all of those, but did you know that the library also offers use of a metal detector, a thermal camera, and a decibel meter, just to name a few? Or, if you have little ones in your life, perhaps they'd like to borrow the latest hex bugs when they check out their books. Libraries allow us resources to peruse and also a space to gather. The pandemic brought to light the availability of the library lawn as a gathering space. The large expanse of lawn played an integral part of bringing back in-person programming. Children's concerts on the library lawn now have drawn crowds of over 100, with ample space for singing and dancing, too. That's a significant increase over the indoor meeting room, which has a much smaller capacity. The Friends of the Library support multiple programs, and they hosted a successful open house at the end of March. The library has been partnering with community organizations such as Wright Lock Farm, the Jank Center, and even Studio on the Common to further expand programming. In terms of the building itself, the children's room was renovated extensively in 2021 with a formal dedication ceremony last May. In 2022, we also implemented a new print management system, and patrons can now print, scan, and fax from one location. This year, the young adult section will be relocated and revamped with space and furniture designed for teens. Our wireless network had 77% more users in 2022 than 2021, and we expect that demand to continue to grow. To meet these demands, we will upgrade the wiring and Wi-Fi this year. As students return to the building to gather and do homework, and other patrons access the Internet for a multitude of needs, this upgrade is much needed and will be appreciated by many. In 2022, our longtime Director Anne Wharton has retired, and Nicole Langley has been on board as Director since last summer. Many of you have probably met her already. In closing, your library continues to serve the town well, thanks to the strong support from town government, Friends of the Winchester Library, a strong volunteer network, and all of you. Thank you for your ongoing support of the library and its mission.
Thank you very much. Next, under Article One, we will hear from the Conservation Commission, their Chair, Well, might as well do the Conservation Commission, give you the background. So, they're a seven-member board appointed by the Town Manager with approval from the Select Board. The Commission has responsibility for the preservation of open space and the implementation of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Winchester Wetlands Bylaw. It holds public hearings on projects that are in or near the wetland It holds public hearings on projects that are in or near the wetland resource area as well, which you can gather those hearing dates on the town's website.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Miller. I'm here representing the Conservation Commission, of which I am Chair. Just gonna do a little bit of a refresher and a little bit of update about the Commission. The Commission is the official agency specifically charged with the protection and management of the state's and Winchester's natural resources, including wetlands and conservation lands, and their critical roles. As was just mentioned, we have seven members and a wonderful full-time Administrator. Many of you probably know Elaine Vreeland. We categorize our activities in four buckets, if you will: being reactive, being proactive, being advocates, and being collaborators. And I'll get a little bit of detail of each one of those. With regard to our reactive activities, we are permitting agency. Our authority and permitting comes, as was just mentioned actually, from the Conservation Commission Act, which is a state law, from the Wetlands Protection Act, which is a state law, and from Winchester's own Wetlands Bylaw, something is generated via Home Rule. And again, each one of these are laws, and we are authorized, and in fact, of course, by our oaths required to enforce those laws. We review, as part of our permitting process, all proposed activities within regulated wetland areas and issue permits for projects in those areas to ensure that they will follow state and local regulations. With regard to what triggers our review and what defines wetlands, it's any work within 100 feet of a wetland, lake, or pond, 200 feet of a river or stream, or with the 100-year floodplain. So, in a town which has as much water and wetlands, used to be called Waterfield, by the way, as Winchester, that actually takes in a lot of area in town. And so, a lot of projects in town eventually end up in front of us in terms of applying for a permit. A permit process, called the Notice of Intent, comes before us. It's a full-fledged application describing the projects in detail. There's a public hearing that follows, and then a conditioned permit is issued, which is called an order of conditions. In adjudicating these, we try to work constructively with the applicants, but we, of course, have to take into account what the laws are and the benefits of certain directions in the work to wetlands and conservation spaces. We've had a number of recent high-visibility hearings. The EverSource Underground Power Lines would be one, which the power lines crossed through the Aborig- crossed under the Aborigona River in a number of different places. The Morocco School Culvert was recently in front of us. Converse Place was recently in front of us. Winning Farm, the development in the northwest of town was there. The transfer station rehabilitation. Woodside Road, Winter Pond Refresh, and Swanton Street, Aborigona River, MWR sewer upgrades. So these are all fairly sizable projects, all of which the Conservation Commission has to weigh in on in terms of assessing how they comport with the various wetlands laws. In terms of upcoming high-visibility matters, the Lynch School rebuild is certainly going to be a big one. The Lynch School is adjacent to a river, and as far as the current plans stand, as I understand them, there's going to be a river crossing as well, so both of those will trigger very healthy review under the Wetlands Protection Laws. Converse Place, as you are perhaps all aware of, that was something that we denied the application, and so it still remains a continuing matter as the applicants are pursuing that from an appeal perspective. Our proactive roles are conservation land, where Winchester, as you may or may not know, has 150 acres of conservation land hidden in various places around town, in people's backyards and whatnot. It's situated in various places. We recently, over the last couple of years, received additional conservation land, which is part of the 150, about 20 acres of the Winning Farm space. 18 acres will be coming to us as a result of the Veil development as well. All our activity, as we talk about in a second, is supported by volunteers, which are in addition to the Conservation Commission. Many of you have probably seen this map on the town website. It shows both conservation areas as well as parks. Add these details to red areas are the actual conservation spaces that are marked on this map. But going forward, the areas I just mentioned in the upper right are the about 18 acres that will be coming with the Veil. Upper left are the 20 acres that come with Winning Farm. And the box reflects 12 acres at Wright Lock Farm, which are actually under our jurisdiction, if you will, because it's become part of a conservation restriction for the farm signed over to the Conservation Commission. Continuing with the proactive theme, we have started, in many ways actually refreshed, a land stewards program. So residents, generally areas adjacent to the conservation spaces, can take over a management role of the different conservation spaces. We've had a number of residents who are doing this. They work with various other groups, such as the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, to oversee what's happening there. And it's been a great marriage of a variety of volunteers at all age levels, helping the Conservation Commission get its job done. Picture on the left shows Girl Scouts working on boardwalks at Zucker Brook, and then Eagle Scouts working on boardwalks in town forests. And this is all very recent work. In terms of advocacy, it was just mentioned, actually, by Beth, that this past weekend was Aborigona Day plus Earth Day, which is an event that's now sponsored by the Conservation Commission with collaboration from a variety of other groups: Cultural District, Griffith Museum, Chamber of Commerce, and the Select Board. Specifically this weekend, it was cleaning up areas around the Aborigona River, but we also have a much broader, longer-term activity called the Aborigona Initiative, which is restoring the shoreline all along the Aborigona River as it goes through downtown. You may have seen a lot of that work that's going on and ongoing as well. And then, sort of a little dot on the radio screen, which we think will be coming along, is we call them pocket parks and Milwaukee Forests, and stay tuned for further details on that. Finally, in terms of collaboration, I mentioned the Scouts also collaborate with the high school, but you may not know that we are collaborators with the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a consulting role on their applications. We're chartered, specified members of the Permanent Street Tree Committee, which you'll be hearing a lot more about, hopefully, in the near future. It's sort of been quiet for a few years. We're chartered on the Housing Partnership Board as well, and the city member there. And then, of course, we work with the Climate Action Advisory Committee. So, going forward, you have an engaged board, very focused on the open spaces and wetlands of Winchester. We have one open position. If anything I've said is of interest to you, please let us know. It's a busy job. I won't underplay that, but it's an important job, and I think you get to have an impact on good things in town. We'll be continuing our protection of resources in Winchester, and I'd like to say we're going to formalize as best we can the importance of climate resilience as one of the analytical tools we employ in assessing applications that come before us. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. So going back to the School Committee, it's been brought to the moderator's attention that the School Committee currently is in Disney World, supporting the high school music program. The orchestras, the bands, and the choirs are all performing there today. And they would like to postpone Article One to a time certain for the First Order of Business on Thursday. Is there a motion to postpone Article One to the First Order of Business on Thursday? Thank you. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We will be hearing from the School Committee, First Order of Business, on Thursday. In terms of all the boards and committees, all of those who spoke represent a lot of people in our volunteer government basis, along with, there's a lot of other boards and committees that did not provide reports. And at this time, I think it's really appropriate to thank you all for your service and for your time, because there's nothing better than your gift of time for this town right now. All right. It is 7:40. We are at the end of Article One, and I promised you a break. Please take time to go visit the Girl Scouts. They have things for you to, yummies for you to purchase. As well as, if you would like, please meet with your precincts. New members, introduce yourself. Old members, feel warm and welcoming. And we will see you back in 20 minutes at 8:00.
All right, town meeting, please take your seats. Let's get going. Welcome back. I hope you enjoyed your break. We are going to be moving on to Article Three on Page Four of your booklet. It is moved and seconded that the report of the Planning Board be received and filed. On behalf of the Planning Board, Mr. Dejavarius, the Chair. Technically, you could call him our Town Planner. While it gets up and running, just I should let you know, not all the school committees in Disney. They want to make it very clear they're not all there. Some are, and that there are some present. My apologies to those who gave up the trip of a magical moment to be with us. Mr. Dejavarius?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator, town meeting members, residents of Winchester out in TV land. Oh, Madam Moderator, that's the power. Thank you. I have a little bit of Girl Scout cookie in my teeth, I apologize. Good evening. I think I said all that. I'm Dejavarius, I'm current Chair of the Planning Board, and I'd like to share with you our semi-annual report. So, we typically say thanks to a whole bunch of people, and we get to work with a lot of amazing people, both within town and, I'm sorry, within Town Hall, as well as boards and committees. I thank all of them. This year, or this, this spring, I want to give a massive shout-out to Suzanne Gill, who's our Administrative Assistant, who has kept Sally and I somewhat sane over the last several months, and also Assistant Town Engineer Brian Manter, who has also come through in a big way. I, I, I was remiss in not putting in a slide welcoming our newest member of the Planning Board, Kerry Leighton. We still carry from the Conservation Commission. Kerry comes to us from, she was a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee from way back when, so Kerry knows something about planning. We're excited to have her on the board, and we welcomed her with, I think, four or five straight weeks of meetings, and I felt sorry for her. And then I heard David Miller's presentation, and I think she escaped just in time. So, that's the wrong way. So, there are a lot of new people in town meeting, and perhaps you're not familiar with what the Planning Board is, so we're going to do a real quick description of what the Planning Board does. We are an entity established by state law, and we have duties which are laid out by law. They unsurprisingly often use the word "plan." In particular, we look at land use, short and long term. We have, we also put together the comprehensive master plan. We look at needs, concerns, issues, and trends, all so that our community can evolve gracefully. Under Winchester's bylaws, we also serve as a special permit granting authority in the Center Business District, and we advise the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we are the stewards of the zoning bylaws. So, as I mentioned, one of the things that we have done recently, actually under Madam Moderator's tenure as Chair of the, of the Planning Board, we put together the 2030 Master Plan, and this really is the basis for where we, when we look at things, we look at it through this lens, four core themes of balancing development with preservation, connecting people to places, ensuring sustainability, and building community. As with all things, there is a balance. I can assure you that not everyone in this town thinks the same way, has the same I can assure you that not everyone in this town thinks the same way, has the same priorities. So, there's always a balance which has to be struck between competing needs, priorities, and opinions. So, more concretely, what do we do? We monitor things. We look at what the changes in demographics are, what the housing needs are for current and future residents, what the economic needs are, what sort of housing cost burdens they have. Of course, we're interested in economic development and how that impacts town finances. We do studies, we hire consultants to help us because they are the experts, so we hire consultants who are urban planners, they look at current conditions, they help us see what the possibilities are for changes in land use, and what are the effective and practical approaches to implementing them. And the big tool that we have is to revise zoning bylaws, and we do that for a number of reasons, to address immediate concerns that come up, to perhaps change, correct a course of action, something which doesn't seem to have worked, which needs to be changed, planning for the future, frameworks for future development, future types of land use. And all of this is, again, based on balancing the needs of our residents, business owners, everyone has a piece of pie, and everyone likes their piece. So, it is not possible to foretell the future, and we know that changes in zoning don't often bring about, or I wouldn't say don't often, but don't always bring about the changes we hoped, and that's one of the reasons we have to go and review zoning. And, again, I'm going to use the word "balance" a lot. So, a bit of, on a more personal level, what's happening with the Planning Department. Those of you in Town Meeting, last fall, we recall that we gave Brian Scully a send-off after some seven years with the town. He's happily working in Danvers at the moment, so he's a great guy. So, we had a search committee, we sent out a call for some applications, we had a search committee, search committee vetted candidates, advanced the single candidate forward, we had very successful interviews with that candidate, unfortunately, they chose to take another offer. So, we have reposted the planner position as of last week. We are considering, pursuing an interim planner to help us with some of the work, we won't be able to do some of the long-range stuff with this person, but the board will step in. So, currently, we have no town planner, and we haven't had a planner since essentially the first week of January. This is one thing that has really become apparent, is that without redundancy in the department, you're kind of, if I'm going to be polite, you're at a loss. I have other language, we can go to Pub later and talk about that. So, essentially, we have a full-time employee, who his job is being done as best as possible by volunteers who are not experts in the field. So, there's a lot of stuff that isn't getting done, there's now, there's a lot of support for other boards that isn't done. Let me, let me move to my notes here and stop ad-libbing. And we're in the midst of several significant initiatives which we cannot stop, it's not like we can put things on hold, if the state says you must do this, then we must do that. And so, there are major initiatives which require professional support, and so, I'm going to be really blunt, we need both a town planner and an assistant town planner. The Planning Department, the Planning Board has asked for this for several years, Town Meeting actually approved this position a couple of years back, we had it in our budget. It's the budget that you don't see, it's the budget that the Planning Board gives to the town manager, which goes to the town manager and the FinCom, and they look at it and they say, "We don't have money," and so Town Meeting doesn't realize that we've been asking for this for a while, but since we're kind of in dire straits, I'm going to be blunt. Okay, so, one of the things that we do talk about every time is the status of multi-unit development in town, and I wanted to simplify this chart this time, but the Planning Board insisted I put all of these numbers in, so if it's hard to read, it's their fault. So, the two projects on 735 Main Street, which is Skellings in Maine, the old Mahoney property, and 654 Main Street, Fells Hardware, those approvals were appealed, those appeals have all come back, and the projects are now okay to go forward. As the Chair of the Select Board stated, the 240Bs on Cambridge Street and River Street, they are now actually, the affordable unit lottery is open, and it closes at the end of May, so if you are interested in entering that lottery, or you know someone who is interested in entering the lottery for an affordable unit, please talk to Town Hall. Let's see, 10 Converse Place, it was approved by the Planning Board, it was denied by the Conservation Commission, that is now being appealed by the developer, both to the DEP, and there's a suit against the town because it was denied by Concom for two different reasons. Let's see, here we go. 8789 Cross Street is a very small friendly 40B, it's called colloquially, it's a local initiative project between the Town of Winchester and a developer, those are nine units on Cross Street. What's remarkable is two of those units are at a much lower level of affordability, so that is currently, that just went before the ZBA last week, I believe they had their first meeting. Washington Swanton, I don't have anything to say about that because I'm ignorant of that. On the Waterfield Lot, Civico is in the last throes of getting things together in order to move forward with submitting a permit application, that is going through the Planning Board, because we are the special permit grounding authority for the Center Business District, one of those things that the Planning Board cannot put off. I haven't said a lot about our safe harbor, or the subsidized housing inventory, in particular, nothing has changed. We are no longer in safe harbor, we haven't been there for a year, and until we start getting housing produced, we will still be, 40Bs will be able to come through in town. Last fall, thank you very much, Town Meeting passed the ADU bylaw, amazing amount of support, we really appreciate it. That was just approved by the Attorney General, so that means it goes into effect, and we are working with the Building Department to get eligibility requirements all nailed down, and hopefully that'll be done soon, and I know people have been asking about this, so everyone is excited that this is going forward and that there has been so much interest. I'm running out of time. Madam Moderator, how much time do I have left, do you know?
Eighteen seconds.
Oh. May I have an extension of four minutes?
Town Meeting, the Chair of the Planning Board would like an extension of his time by four minutes. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it, you may proceed, four minutes.
I apologize. So, I'll go very quickly now. So, one thing that has come down from the state is the requirement that we have multifamily zoning by right within districts, within certain distances, and of a certain density near MBTA stations. So, this is an effort to increase production of housing and drive down costs. Benefit to Winchester is that hopefully we will have more affordable housing, as in the housing that will be more affordable, and we will retain access to state funds, the state has made it very clear that if municipalities do not comply, then we will feel pain. And so, there is, the Attorney General came out recently, very strong statements that there's no way out, you must comply, there's no way to avoid your responsibilities, so there's, I have a lot of statements that I won't go into. So, what are we doing about it? The state has provided Winchester with consultants who have been working very hard, looking at our, at the CBD, and also up North Main Street, pretty, there's an enormous compliance model that's used, you put in all of your zones, and it turns out the numbers and figures out if you're compliant. The state has given us about $30,000 worth of effort from these people, they're going to run a number of models and give us the results, and from that, we will go and we will look at our zoning and see how we change it in order to accommodate these areas. We are moving towards a zoning, bringing zoning before Town Meeting in a year, a year, yes. We are continuing working on North Main Street revitalization project, this is also segueing into our work with the MBTA 3A. We have our great consultants, Form and Place, who've been working with, giving the Planning Board ideas about how to, what do you do to revitalize the corridor, what is appropriate, and giving us a range of options that we will then use to figure out what we want to do in terms of zoning. So, we are finishing Phase Two, and the next is Phase Three, where we actually get design guidelines and zoning, and that will also come again next town, in the spring of Town Meeting. We also have another study looking at an area which has often been ignored, which is the light industrial section of town, which is the Holden-Swanton-Cross area. We have a consultant from the MAPC working with us, going through an initial conditions, highlighting things like, did you know that there are 400 people who are employed in that area, that there are like 30 or 40 businesses, that there is a why, that light industrial areas are apparently very precious because they've been converted to residential. We're learning a lot of things. Manufacturing output by, in terms of monetary output, value of manufacturing Massachusetts is the highest it's ever been. So, light industrial areas are very special, so we're looking at it very carefully, trying to understand what's the best use for the town. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are looking at Article, yeah, I'm going to do it right now, Article Three, it is to accept the report of the Planning Board. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the report will be filed and available on the town's website. Moving on to Article Four. It is moved and seconded that the town approve Article Four as printed in the warrant. On behalf of Article Four, we have, again, the Chair of the Planning Board, Mr. Dejarius.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, hello again, Town Meeting. Article Four is a, an article where we're asking you to correct what's essentially a Scrivener's error, which is that at some point, the, a set of dimensional requirements in the zoning table, in the dimensional table, were updated, and apparently one of them was forgotten. So, we're asking that the minimum lot width in feet of a property in the RDA district, which is 20,000 square foot lot, be reduced from 120 feet to 100 feet. The reason why we're asking it to go from 120 to 100 is because you'll see in the top of the red box, the minimum lot frontage is 100 feet, and if you look at all of the other boxes, you'll see that the lot frontage and the lot width are all identical, except for in this one district. And the reason for, other than just making everything nice and clean, the reason that this is important is because it leads to a somewhat nonsensical happening, where you can have a perfectly regular-looking lot, which is this rectangular lot on the left, it has the correct minimum frontage, but because it has, you know, the size of the lot are equidistant all the way to the back, it no longer has the correct minimum lot width, whereas the lot on the right, which is this trapezoidal-like thing, is conforming. And so, we tend to like to have our lots be nicely shaped so they fit together well, and so this is merely a, an effort to clean this up. No existing lot will be made non-conformant, so it doesn't change if your lot is, whatever it is, it stays that is, that way. The red hashed area is approximately where the RDA district is, so it's mostly on the west side of town where the large lots are, and so we ask for your support on this amendment. It's just cleaning up something that's been bothering our Building Commissioner for a while, apparently. So, thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Select Board?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, the Select Board voting unanimously to support this article.
Is there any other board or committee that wanted to offer a recommendation to Town Meeting for their consideration? Seeing no one rise, at this time, Town Meeting members, if you have any questions or comments regarding Article Four, you may come to the microphone, there are two microphones for you to use on the aisles, one is there in the middle, and the other one is there. For those who are new to Town Meeting, we go back and forth, we do not cherry pick. However, if you have spoken on the article already, we ask that all the other members who are in queue speak before you come back to the microphone. Starting on stage left, Mrs. Welch.
Thank you, I'm Jackie Welch from Precinct Five. Thank you, Mr. Dejarius, for your presentation. Through you, Madam Moderator, a question for the Planning Board, the proponent, I was just curious what the basis is for the assumption that it's a Scrivener's error? Like, I don't know one way or the other, but it seems like it's a defined number, so I was just kind of curious if we could get a little more information on the basis, in other words, did somebody look at like a prior version or something like that? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. To the Planning Board, could you please provide Town Meeting information on the basis of why you are saying that this is a Scrivener's error?
To be honest, this is because the Building Commissioner said that this was a mistake that was made and needed to be corrected, and so I'd have to say I take it, Building Commissioner has it.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Hi, Aunt Sarah, Precinct One, sorry about that. I don't believe it's a Scrivener's error at all, and I also don't accept the explanation that it requires or it could lead to a trapezoidal-shaped lot. Obviously, if you want a rectangular lot, you can go 120 by 170, you got 20,400 square foot lot, there, there you go. So, it in no way, you know, requires you to have a trapezoidal lot, but it also, where do you want a purely rectangle lot, it was in something like the flats. Sure, we all love the flats, but where do we have now a nice, large, tractable land in order to make New York City-style streets? We don't. And in fact, in the west side of town, where we want it to be more roomy, we more likely will have curved streets. Whenever you have a curved street, on the inside of that elbow curve, you're always going to have a trapezoidal-shaped lot. So, this allows you to have a trapezoidal-shaped lot where the frontage is only 100, and maybe that back is 120, so it's actually useful. That's one reason why I don't agree with this explanation that it's a Scrivener's error, but there's another big reason. I went onto MassGIS, MassMapper, and I looked for areas in the west, in RDB, that appeared to look, you know, from the map, to be sort of subdivisions that had fairly rectangular shapes in them, and I focused in on two areas, and I'll tell you why. One was Amberwood, and the reason why I focused in there is that the best that I can tell, this actually came in in 1973, which was when our zoning bylaws were kind of formally adopted in the shape that they were now, and Amberwood was built in 74 to 79. So, it's in the area that I want, it looks like it's rectangular, and guess what, and it's built right after I think that this was enacted. Guess what? Every single one of those lots is 124, 123, 122, all in the low 120s for their width, that tells me they passed the law, and then they followed it. That doesn't sound like a Scrivener's error to me. So, before, the decade before, 63 to 68, that's when Thornbury was built, those are, it's another area in RDB, kind of looks rectangular, those are much smaller lots, and they were built in the mid-to-late 60s. What this tells me is somebody saw that development near Woburn was going on, smaller lots, small widths were going on, some planning was done, they said, "Let's pass a bylaw," they passed this bylaw, and then they followed it. So, I think that this is meant to be 120, 100, it's actually useful to have curved roadways where you do have a trapezoidal shape, and so therefore, I'm hoping that we'll vote no on this, thanks.
Thank you. Further on the question? Stage right.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I'm Dorothy Symboli, I'm from Precinct Six. I just wanted to also mention I am on the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a Town Meeting Member for Precinct Six and not representing the zoning board. So, I agree with the previous speaker, I had sort of the same analysis that most likely that 120 feet width, lot width, was the result of the winding and curving nature of the streets and the layout of the subdivisions in District RDA. Note, the minimum lot size in RDA is also 20,000 square feet, so it sets it apart from the other residential districts in Winchester. In my opinion, this requirement, you know, consistent with the previous speaker, is more than a Scrivener's error, and unless we see some sort of documentation to the effect that it isn't, that it is a Scrivener's error, I don't think that we should go assuming it is and changing it. Why it ultimately matters is... Why it ultimately matters is if Article four passes, homes in RDA, which would have less than 120 feet lot width, and therefore potentially pre-existing non-conforming, would be unable to take advantage of the potential benefits of the proposed Article five, which is up next. It might appear unfair and inequitable to convert certain structures in a particular district of, from non-conforming to conforming, right before a town meeting potentially passes Article five. So, I urge you to vote no on Article four.
Seeing no other town meeting members rise, we, yep.
Madam Moderator, may I ask a question of legal counsel in respect to the comment that was just made? Is that within the rules?
Go ahead.
Hi, Michelle McCarthy, Precinct Seven. My question, I believe, might be for the building commissioner. Can you give us some examples of, you know, how this came about? I sit on the Historic Commission, I hear a lot of interesting cases come before us, but I have never heard of someone say, "Hey, we can't do this or that because of this width issue." So, I'm just wondering if either the building commissioner or someone from the planning board can sort of give us some case studies or some examples that have come upon us so we can, I can better understand. You know, has, are developers coming, saying that they can't do different things? I just would like a little bit more explanation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. To our building commissioner and our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Al Wowe, could you please provide town meeting more information regarding Articles Four and the change from 100 to, from 120 to 100, minimum lot width?
Yeah, we had a lot up on Mayflower that they were gonna, it was a knockdown, and they wanted to put a new house in. And the lot, because of the 120, would have shoved it way back from the street line of all the other surrounding homes. So, in other words, up there, it's 35 feet. I think this was gonna be, could go back 45, 50 feet until they got to their 120. So, we looked into it, we did a little research, we found lots that were 120 width back in the 50s, and then we, we couldn't figure out why this 120 was stuck in there, and when all the other lots in town, RG, RDB, and RDC, were all conforming, like 80, 80, 65, 65. And that, that was our impetus for this proposal, to change the bylaw. It, it's not gonna change probably any lots that are up in the RDA area anyways, so it's, the lots are gonna stay the same.
Thank you. There was a question on the floor? Do, would you like a mic? Or would you?
Legal question.
Okay. There's a legal question for clarification. Is that still being requested?
Yes, please.
What would you like legal to clarify?
The question is, if the zoning changes such that the, if a lot is non-conforming because of a dimension, and the dimension in the zoning is changed, does that lot become conforming, or is it, does it, does it still retain the non-conforming nature? Is there a change in conformity?
To our legal counsel, Mr. Tallerman, could you please provide town meeting on Article four and its impact of conforming and non-conformity in our lots?
If it was non-conforming and then became conforming, you would, arguably, and that there's other factors involved, now become conforming and get all the rights associated with a byright conforming property. I suppose there's some scenario whereby you would lose some of the benefits of being a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and some of the rights that, I'm not gonna get into the next article too much, but you wouldn't retain the non-conforming status. If you become conforming, you're conforming. It doesn't often go in that direction. Things normally get bigger, but here it's getting smaller, so my guess is those examples are gonna be pretty rare.
Any other firm, other further questions or comments on the article? Seeing no other town meeting members rise, I believe that you are ready for the vote. This is a zoning article. It requires a two-thirds vote. At this time, because it's a two-thirds vote and it's zoning, I am going to have your clickers. So, if you could please pull those out.
Click if you want.
Yep.
Is it using V-voter?
We are gonna use our V-voter. Might as well get our fingers up in the wake here. We are voting on Article four. Article four is to amend Table 4.1.1 of the zoning bylaw. When casting your vote, a yes is to vote in favor of the motion, and no is a vote to vote in, not in favor of the motion. The light will turn on. You will take your clicker. Yes is green, red is no. All good? Right, voting has closed. Give me one moment, I'll pull up the results. With 142 members voting, 95 required for adoption, there are 82 in affirmative and 60 in the negative, and the motion is lost. While we finish scrolling, it looks like we're almost there. And one of our town meeting members left a brown leather portfolio of papers in the ladies' room during break. If you have found her, if you have any information, if you could let the town clerk or their staff know, that would be wonderful. All right, moving to Article five. It is moved and seconded that the town approve Article five as printed in the warrant. That is on page seven of your booklet. Article five is addressing the amendment on Section 3.5.5. The sponsor is the planning board. On behalf of the sponsor is Mr. Diab Jarius, Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We come before you to ask you to make what seems to be an inscrutable change to an inscrutable article in the zoning bylaws. So, as a, as a prologue, Winchester is a town with a lot of older homes. Many of them were built before zoning was established. These homes may be on lots which are too small, or the homes may be too close to the lot line. And these homes and lots are treated specially in our zoning because of their heritage and the difficulty of making ordinary renovations or updates because they are non-conforming. Section 355 was originally written to accommodate these properties and their special nature. So, 355 was written in 2009, when our zoning bylaws were last codified. They were written to make it easier for certain projects to go forward via special permits rather than through variances. That was the way, the case law changed in 2014, and it, it changed how bylaws such as that were to be interpreted. We now have the case where we have two town bodies which disagree on the interpretation of this bylaw. And so, we have to amend this bylaw in order to clarify it so that there is no ambiguous, it doesn't have an ambiguous interpretation, and the planning board believes to retain its original intent. So, what has changed in 2014? I have a bunch of slides on things like variances and special permits and what's non-conforming. I'm hoping not to get into those, but if the town meeting wants to have a primer and all that, I'm more than happy to give them to you. Prior to 2014, a zoning bylaw could use fairly broad language to say, "We allow you to go forward by special permit." You didn't have to be very specific. You essentially could say, "You either do it by special, by, by, byright," or in any other case. And that's what our zoning bylaw said. It said, it created two categories. One of them was, "You could do this byright for this special set of properties," or "In every other case, you can go through the ZBA and get a special permit." However, this case in 2014 requires us to be more specific with the language. So, what does Article five do? Article five doesn't change anything about how this law, this bylaw has been interpreted since 2009. It makes it consistent with the original intent, makes it consistent with current case law, it eliminates the ambiguities, it doesn't do anything else, it maintains the status quo. It doesn't change eligibility requirements, it doesn't change the process, it doesn't change, it doesn't exempt more properties or exempt fewer properties. There is absolutely no change in how this is being interpreted. That's the whole point of this article, is to bring clarity so that we have an even keel going forward. Winchester has, as I said, many non-conforming, single-family and duplex homes on lots created Prior to 2009, it was very difficult to get any work done. If you could not get it done byright, you had to go through a variance. A variance is an incredibly difficult thing to get. So, people weren't able to get modest amounts of work done in their homes. And the language in 355 is very particular. It says that you cannot do things which are any more disturbing than the existing non-conformities on the lot. So, there's a high bar that you have to meet in order to get this through. You can't just go in and just do anything you want. So, 355 was written to allow homeowners to make reasonable changes to their property. Projects which would not introduce new non-conformities or exacerbate existing non-conformities by 355 would be able to proceed byright. Everything else goes to the ZBA for special permit. Two categories, that was it. All other projects. So, what happens if we don't clean up this language so that it's at the very least, everyone agrees on what it means? The building department will interpret 355 the same way it has been interpreting it since 2009. We have legal counsel at the time who gave a statement to the building department saying, "This is how you interpret it." They will advise these people that they should go for a special permit. The ZBA would look at these same projects and say, "Nope, maybe you have to go and get a variance." So, now we have two arms of government which don't agree. We have possibility for legal challenges. Homeowners are confused, they don't know what to do. They don't know which, whether their project will go forward. So, I know people, some people are unhappy with the ability of these non-conforming lots or non-conforming structures to go through a special permit. That's been made apparent to the planning board. I want to point out that we have thousands of non-conforming structures and lots in town. If we want to change a policy which affects thousands, possibly thousands of lots, then I think we need to step back, and we need to take a very measured look at moving forward. Planning board is not looking to change that policy. We're merely trying to maintain the status quo so everyone understands what's going on. If someone disagrees with the way this policy has been in place since 2009, then I would recommend putting in a specific article before this town meeting to change the wording, to have the public hearings, to understand the impact. Again, planning board's not looking for that. We're just trying to maintain the status quo. At this point, I could go and dive deep into all sorts of things about special permits and variances, and why it's so difficult to get a variance, and what makes your property conforming or non-conforming. But I think if, if town council wanted to have a few words to say about this at this point, he knows a lot more about the legal world than I do.
Jay Tallerman, Town Counsel. This is actually a pretty good slide to start with, because this is kind of, I'm, I'm gonna try and distill this down into terminology that is easier to understand. And this is a really helpful thing to remember as we talk about it. Byright is easy. That's when you go in, you want to do an addition to your home, you get a, a building permit. Special permit, little bit harder. You have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. You have to show that it's not a detriment to the neighborhood or is going to cause any other adverse impacts. If the zoning board agrees with you after a public hearing, you get that. A variance is almost impossible, under the existing standards under Massachusetts law, to achieve. They are granted sparingly, but it's very difficult. And moreover, if you have a neighbor that is dissatisfied with your variance that you got, and they appeal it, they will win. There are very few cases in Massachusetts where someone with the receipt of a variance that is challenged has ever prevailed. So, it's very difficult. So, with that in mind, and with noting that there are many, many homes, I would say a majority of your homes, the town meeting members, are non-conforming. What does that mean? That means that we have zoning bylaws that have certain dimensional requirements, and your property doesn't conform to them. It was built before them, it still exists, they can't take it away, but if you want to do something with that, then you need some kind of relief. And the first form of relief, the first source of the relief that you need comes from Massachusetts state law. That's the Zoning Act. And then the second source is more custom elements of how Winchester wants to do it. That's our zoning bylaws in Winchester. Under state law, since the Zoning Act was completely revamped in around 75, and even bef, 1975, and even before that, there was always a confusing blend of cases that has continued to evolve until around 2014, as Diab said. What started to happen was the, around 2004, the, the court started to take a fresh look at what it meant, or how you would get to yes if you wanted to make physical changes to your non-conforming property. What those cases evolved through until about 2009 was that if you're not making any real change to it at all, or it's a de minimis change, like adding a dormer or something, that's byright. That's easy. You're not really changing much. But literally, anything else that you were changing physically to your home, you would need a special permit. So, that's a significant form of relief, very little byright. But what the law says, because we're a home-rule state, is that each and every city and town in Massachusetts can make it easier. So, what Winchester did in 2009 with the original adoption of 355 was make it a little bit easier by adding three criteria. Those are numbered one, two, and three in the bylaw. Those are numbered one, two, and three in the bylaw. Those things are all where you can do it as a matter of right. You can go into Al's office and pull a building permit. Those are where you may have a zoning defect on your property, but the addition that you have or are putting on doesn't create any new ones or make that one worse. That was the idea behind 355, and it was decided that we're going to let a bunch of stuff go by right, and for everything else, you need a special permit. So they made a, they cut a break for local homeowners, for all of you. Then in 2014, the next case came, and that's kind of the, the latest case in this line of cases. And what that said is, okay, that's fine. Special permit would be about all you need. This is a statewide case. But if you're adding a brand-new nonconformity, something brand-new, you would need a variance. So I'll give you an example. Let's say your property, or your house, is too close to the front lot line. So you're nonconforming there. If you want to do a change to that house, so you're totally nonconforming there, and you either want to push a little further closer to the street, or you want to add on to the house that doesn't create a new nonconformity, you have plenty of land in back, and you want to add a sunroom behind it, that's still just a special permit. But let's say, for example, that your house is at the maximum height that it is, whatever that is, 30 feet, let's just call it for a round number, but you want to go to 35 feet because you want to add that, an additional bedroom a, a half-story above. That's a brand-new nonconformity, doesn't comply with Winchester's zoning bylaws. Under that case, it requires that you get a variance. Whereas when we adopted 355 in town, it was thought that variances would never be required. That case added this additional veneer on what you can do with your house. Now, I've looked at 355 a dozen times. There is language in the last paragraph that says, "In any other case, you need to get a special permit." As your attorney, and my old firm was the firm that provided the advice in 2009 as well, which was correct, as your attorney, I would still interpret that as not needing a variance. But it's a little ambiguous. And in fact, as Deaub said, there are disagreements among local officials, fair, good-natured disagreements, but disagreements nonetheless as to whether or not a variance is required. I have taken the position, I think most attorneys would take the position, that a variance is never required. But when you have two boards, or multiple officials disagreeing, that's probably not a good place to be if you, as a homeowner, want to go in and get relief, and you're hearing two different things from two different entities. So the idea, what I was tasked with by the planning board, by the planner, by others who were concerned about disagreement, was add as few words as possible, but clean up this ambiguity. So I added 10 words. I drafted this. I added 10 words to essentially make it clear that the current status quo, or the status quo at least since 2009, that no variance would ever be required. Does that make it easy for you to get an addition on your house? If it's minor, and if it, there's no detriment to the neighborhood, and it's pretty simple, probably pretty easy. We've got a great zoning board in town. I don't think they're trying to deprive anyone of anything. They'll probably say yes to that. If you have something that falls in the category of obnoxious, or too large, or shutting out the, the sun and air from your neighbor, they'll probably say no, and they probably should. So there's still excellent control there, and there has been since 2009, to say yes or no. What we have eliminated since 2009, and what this change makes clear, is that no one has to go through the variance criteria there, which is very hard, and if appealed, would likely not be sustained. So, the town has made an effort since 2009 to make all of you homeowners be able to get additions to your homes, or modifications to your homes, in a way that is carefully controlled but not impossible. This preserves that status quo. It doesn't add new rights. It doesn't make it easier to, to do it than what is currently enjoyed, in my opinion, under your bylaw. But it does remove an ambiguity and keep different officials in town from taking different positions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Tallerman. May we have a recommendation from the select board?
The select board voted favorable action for zero, and then with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. FinCon, did you make a recommendation on this article? Okay. Any other boards or committees who would like to make recommendations? I believe Mr. John Serbeer of the Housing Partnership Board would like to make a recommendation.
Madam Moderator, town meeting members, I'm John Serbeer from the Winchester's Housing Partnership Board. This is a board that was established by town meeting to comment and make recommendations on, on housing-related issues, especially those related to the affordability of housing. Last week, the Housing Partnership Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 5. A simple way of understanding this article, as stated both by the planning director and by town council, is that it preserves the status quo. The change proposed by the planning board simply maintains the original intent of the zoning code adopted by town meeting in 2009 of permitting use of a special permit for modifications to currently nonconforming, single- and two-family residential homes if that project cannot be undertaken as of right. Importantly, the proposed wording makes it easier to undertake modifications to already nonconforming properties. This would facilitate the ability of people to remain in their existing homes rather than having to move elsewhere. If a home instead is sold, it easily could be torn down and replaced by a larger and more expensive house. Approval of Article 5 will help maintain the affordability of Winchester homes. The proposed change in wording will result in the continuation of historical building trends through respective modifications, rather than resulting in any kind of dramatic change. In summary, Article 5 is good for housing, it's good for people. The Housing Partnership Board recommends approval of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serbeer. Town meeting members, seeing no other boards or committees rise to give recommendations, I please ask you to come to the mics. For your knowledge, I will be timing everyone at three minutes, so keep them at three. And we will start. Dr. Miller, please.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. My question is to town council. The way, the way I read this, there's five paragraphs in 355. I understand the explanation of the added words in the fifth paragraph, but my question relates to the...
Four word, sorry, let me, say start again. Did everyone hear that?
I, I think we could hear you, but I just turned your mic on to make sure.
Yeah, it didn't work. I used to be a rowing coach, I could hear me all.
You got a great voice, it carries.
So my question doesn't relate to the six words in the fifth paragraph, council. It, it relates to adding the four words in the first paragraph. And my concern is that the first, the three, three numbered paragraphs in the first paragraph talk about the authority of the building commissioner. And what I'm concerned about is that the four words added in that introductory paragraph limit the authority of the building commissioner. And it seems to me that that, the first paragraph clearly says that, that the structures may be reconstructed, blah, 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 upon a determination by the building commissioner that XYZ. So, the last paragraph talks about the board of appeals, but I'm concerned is, why, why add those four words if that hems in the discretion of the building commissioner? Which, if, if the building commissioner makes that determination, then the permit issues, the building permit issues. So, depending on the answer, I, I, I think it might make sense to remove those first four words, but I, I understand the, the, the six words added in the last paragraph.
To town council, can you please provide additional information? We are talking about the first sub-paragraph of Article 5. There's the first entry sentence, and then thereafter, there is a standalone paragraph indented in. What we're looking for additional information is on, is the words exactly, or add new nonconformities, which was added as part of Article 5? Could you pull by town meeting information about, is that limiting the authority of the building commissioner?
No, it, it actually is just so that it matches with the, the same or similar language in the final paragraph there. It, it essentially empowers the building commissioner to grant building permits except where these circumstances exist, that there's not a increase or change in the nonconforming nature, or the addition of new nonconformities. Again, with the 2014 case, that it was the introduction of new nonconformities that changed the landscape. So if the building commissioner does find that there's the addition of new nonconformities, then that language is going to track to the final paragraph there where the special permit criteria would be in existence. So it was really just to develop some parity between those two paragraphs.
Thank you very much. Did you have a follow-up question, Dr. Miller?
Well, I, with, with respect, the, the four words added in that first paragraph are an objective standard that is different than the language before giving discretion to the building commissioner. So I, I, I read those four words as a restriction, and because, because it's the last paragraph that gives this EBA all the discretion.
No, I, I, so, may I?
He was referencing talking to me and not you. Sorry, you can go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Tallerman. Yep.
So I disagree that there's a mix of subjective and objective in the first paragraph. It's all objective. When something doesn't increase the nonconforming nature of a structure, that's an objective criteria as well.
But they're not, sorry.
Yes.
Just to finish, I, we, we, I have no self, I mean, I'm not, this is a good faith question. It seems to me that the language as it exists now gives the, the, the building commissioner can make a determination that it does not increase the, the nonconforming nature of said structure. Now, that could be a compromise, you moved it a little bit away from the street, and you moved it toward a side yard. And that, that could be a combination that the...
Building commissioner believes is not a net increase in the nonconforming nature. So I, I think that first, first clause is not objective. We just disagree, probably disagree about that.
Town council, can you just clarify on what is subjective and what is not as new nonconformities is?
So...
Is it, or is it not subjective, new nonconformities?
So, new nonconformities is completely objective.
We agree. But the language there now, I would submit, Madam Moderator, gives a little more room to the building, which I would not like to see brought.
There is no change. It's been repeated to town meeting at this point. There's no change in the powers of the, with this current, what's proposed, there's no change to the powers of the building commissioner as currently.
That's correct.
Thank you. Further on the question, stage left.
Hi, Bill McGonigal, precinct three. I submitted a presentation to help me with my...
Could we get his presentation up? Did you want to come down to the podium so you can control your PowerPoint?
If that would be easier.
I think it might be for you, unless it's a one-pager. Just so you know, a reminder of three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Bill McGonigal, I'm a member from precinct three. I'm also a former member of the zoning board of appeals. And I'm here to tell you a couple of reasons why I think it's in our town's interest to vote no on Article 5. In short, I consider it to be inconsistent with Massachusetts law, unfair to numerous residents, it encourages inconsistent review proceedings, it's premised on an unreliable and biased record, and it does not solve the real problem, which is that our zoning bylaws are a mess. As mentioned already by town council, our powers to do anything in zoning flows from Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts general laws. That says what we can and cannot do. If it says we can't do it, we can't do it. If it says, if it doesn't say we can do it, same deal. 40A, Section 6 has to do with special permits, and it says that we can issue them for things to be extended or altered. It does not say we can issue them for new nonconformities. If the legislature wanted to give us that power, they could have included it in the statute. They didn't. I'm sure all the lawyers out there are familiar with the idea that if something isn't excluded from a list, you can't consider it. Here, new nonconformities were not included in what 40A, Section 6 gives us the power to do. Therefore, we're stepping beyond our bounds if we start to allow them. This is not my opinion alone. The Dedrick case from 2014, which has been referenced a number of times, is a case from the Massachusetts Court of Appeals. And the language there that really jumps out at me is where they said in no uncertain terms that we must require a variance for the creation of any new nonconformity. By passing this article, we're going to be in direct confrontation with that law. That creates ambiguity. Ambiguity is where litigators have their playhouses. I can say that with authority as a litigator, but I don't want to see our town paying to solve this question for others around the state. I'd rather us stay within the confines of what the statute allows. Secondly, this article is going to create a, a unjustified unfairness among different residents in town, because it's going to treat properties that are conforming different from properties that are already nonconforming. It's literally going to divide our, our town in that sense. And what I mean by that is if you have two houses that are pretty much identical, but one maybe already has a sunroom which encroaches upon the size setback required by our bylaws, that's a nonconforming property. If it wanted to do an addition, create a new nonconformity of any size, special permit is the way it goes. If you had a property which is already conforming, it played by the rules, did everything right, and they want to put on that same sort of sun deck that the other room, other house already had, they go through a variance. This is creating two different schemes to which all these petitions will have to be reviewed. Even if they're identical, that's not fair. What it does is, and what the planning board suggested in their summary for the article, is we're going to rely upon the discretion of the ZBA. That's not a great idea. The ZBA is just three people. They change from time to time. The ZBA today has two different people of the three people who ran it a year ago. Things shift. We want to make sure that our town is protected by our laws and not by who happens to be appointed to a board at any point in time. And by the way, the opinions that I'm providing here were unanimously voted upon and agreed upon by the ZBA back in February in submitting a memo to the planning board. If you want to see that memo, you can follow that tiny URL link up there. You'll find it easily available. Next, we're being told that this current situation we have imposes a great deal of hardship on a large number of homeowners. I was very curious if that was true, because if it is, we should make a study and make sure it's being addressed. I did a public records request to the planning board for all documents considered for this article. Going through those, all they had was anecdotal evidence, much of which originated from an architect in town. He's a great architect, but he's also somebody who has a financial interest in getting more of these special permits granted. Instead, I then went, went through every single zoning board opinion from the last two years, every single one available. Forty-seven of those were available regarding special permits, variances, and site plan reviews. Forty-three were granted.
Mr. McGonigal, your time has expired.
Thirty seconds.
You may proceed.
In short, we're not denying a lot of special permit applications, and when it comes to variances, two-thirds of those were also granted. I don't see a need to revise this in the immediate. What we need to do is go through all of our zoning bylaws, make a comprehensive review, fix all the problems, and make them so you don't need a lawyer to navigate them. It was said earlier today that changes in the zoning bylaws don't always bring about the changes we hope for. I can't imagine a better theme for what I'm trying to express right now. These changes are not going to fix the problems that we're talking about today, they're only going to lead to new ones. And for those reasons, I ask you to please vote no on Article 5. Thank you.
To clarify to town meeting, the ZBA reported to the moderator that they did not have a recommendation for town meeting's consideration. They did not have a recommendation. So you have not heard from the ZBA this evening.
Good evening, town meeting. I'm Jackie Welch. I'm a former member of the select board and former member of the planning board for five years, former chair. I also am a practicing attorney, and my practice includes real estate law. With all due respect to Mr. Jarius, the planning board, the select board, and Attorney Tallerman, all of whom I greatly respect and admire, I just would, wish I could take all of my time and repeat everything that Mr. McGonigal just said. It was an excellent presentation, and here's the bottom line. If you look at... And here's the bottom line. If you look at your Town Meeting booklet, just look at the bolded language, okay? This is what this article is about. It's about add new nonconformities. It's not about extending current nonconformities as most of the original presentation by the Planning Board and Attorney Tullerman tried to get you to think about. What this article is about is about adding new nonconformities, eliminating the variance process, and instead using, as was indicated, the lesser special permit process, not for extending existing nonconformities, but look at your booklet. Look what the booklet says. It's for adding new nonconformities. That's what this is about. This is not about the special permit process applied to existing nonconforming properties. What this is actually about is changing the procedure for new nonconformities that would apply to nonconforming property. So if you are confused in any way, you should vote no. If you're not sure what is going on here, you should vote no. So I respect everybody involved in this process. This is a really important article. And it's important for all the reasons that Mr. McGonigal said. But by us not doing anything, we're consistent with state law. We're consistent with Dedrick. We're consistent with the cases that have come since Dedrick by not doing anything, okay? So that's what I would ask you to do, is to vote no. Respectfully, this could be studied more. They call it the practice of law because there is no exact, like in engineering or something, some like perfect answer. It's the practice of law, okay? These are cases, and all the fact patterns are different, okay? So if we leave everything the way it is now, we let these great boards work within the law that exists now, which is consistent with state law, as Mr. McGonigal pointed out, then we can have, continue to have thoughtful discussions about this and maybe another Warren article. And with all due respect to the proponents, I respect them and admire them, but please vote no. Thank you.
Did you have a point of order?
Madam Moderator. I think that there have been a number of statements made about legalities and illegalities, or what is legal and what is not legal. And I would ask that you would, through you to Town Council, please respond to those statements. I think it comes to the crux of this matter is whether or not we are violating state law if we continue with the practice that we've had for the last however many years since 2009, or whether this article is in compliance with state law. I think that's a very important question that needs to be addressed.
And Madam Moderator, if that's in response to my respectful comments, and I respect the opportunity to respond to Attorney Tullerman, because I've read all the cases as well. I'm not an expert. There is no one expert. There's a lot of attorneys in here. There's a lot of people who are not attorneys who know more than the attorneys do. This is a really complex area of law. So there is not one answer. And with all due respect to Mr. Tullerman, who I greatly admire and respect him massively, these are multiple cases. The statute, the state statute-
All right, I understand you. I thank you. Moving on. At this time, I'm going to let a couple more people speak, and then I'm going to let Mr. Tullerman speak about all the legal points that are made from all the Town Meeting members.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dorothy Symboli, Precinct Six. Again, I am a member of the Board of Appeals. I am not speaking on behalf of the Board of Appeals. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a representative of Precinct Six. I agree with the two previous speakers. Mr. McGonigal did a great presentation. I'm going to kind of boil it down more simply for you, not talk about case law, not talk about, hopefully not like a lawyer. Town Council pointed out that a neighbor could easily challenge a variance in land court. I agree with Town Council on that. A neighbor could. What a neighbor can't do is easily challenge, as easily, a special permit. So what happens is if the neighbor, if you're, if the homeowner or the developer wants to, has a pre-existing nonconforming structure, and they want to apply for a new nonconformity of any kind, the change in this law that they've drafted, that the proponent is presenting, has no limitations. That means they can blow through all their greenscape in the backyard, means they can put three stories in, they can blow through the height requirement. Now you're the neighbor next door to them. Do you have any ability to challenge that? I mean, you can go to the, you can go to the Board of Appeals, you can sit in on the meetings, you can voice your dissent. But the reality is, if the board has to grant that special permit under this new proposed law, that the only recourse that neighbor has is to appeal to the land court. And they're going to have to spend money and time. They're going to bring a lawsuit against the town. But most likely, I mean, I shouldn't say most likely. I don't know what the end result would be in land court, but they have less ability to challenge that. The end result of that is that there's no compromise in the process. Right now, the builder, the developer, the landscaper, the architect, they all have to work with these neighbors that show up and they say, oh, you know, this is, this is going to impact my home. This is going to impact this. And they may be things that the homeowner never contemplated. Well, right now, it's a, it's a process of compromise. The neighbors work together. That's what this community is about. It's not putting one person against the other, giving one person rights to like do whatever they want on their property and ignore the neighbor. And that is why I'm urging you to vote no on Article Five.
Thank you. Stage left, Mike.
Thank you. Stephanie Zaramba, Precinct Two. I want to bring up a net new point. At a couple of recent Select Board meetings over the past few months, there have been statements made that there have allegedly been complaints or resident frustrations with the zoning board of appeals. I think that those frustrations from residents, to the extent they exist, are, at least on some level, unfairly targeted, unfairly placed to the zoning board of appeals. That board is required to interpret and apply the laws that this legislative body sets. So to the extent people are confused or frustrated, or they don't understand why one house gets one treatment, the other house gets another treatment, it's kind of our fault here. And you've heard, I think it's worth noting, a number of attorneys, including myself, get up tonight and disagree on what is written in our motion booklet, says and how it should be interpreted. It is true that our zoning laws need cleaning up. Prior speaker said they're a mess. That's, I would argue, true. I don't think this is a good change right now because it seems like it's just adding to the confusion. It's going to place these poor volunteer folks on the zoning board of appeals in more crossfire of more confusion. That's unfair to them. And you all, again, all due respect to the planning board. I think, yes, looking at these, making changes, making things more predictable, more consistent, a little easier to do the things that you need to for your, we probably all have some pre-existing nonconformance to our houses. We want to do that, but it needs a little more time, and we need to do it right. And I think we would be making an unforced error to do this now rather than just do it a little bit more later.
Mr. Mucci, you waited an awful long time. Are you really sitting back down? All right. There is a resident who has asked to speak. Mr. Leaf, you are welcome to join the queue. And I will see you in order. Let these, yep. Stage left, Mike. He'll go after you.
Thank you. Chris Coletta, Precinct Six. This is a clarifying question, I think probably best addressed to Town Council. But can you just clarify, in the instance of a home that is conforming, if they want to add a new nonconformity or a nonconformity, whether that's a variance or a special permit process, and how this is the same or different than the instance of a otherwise conforming lot? Thank you.
Thank you. Town Council, could you provide clarity to Town Meeting regarding, one, a conforming property would like to add a nonconformity, the process of that is, and then also the difference between a legal nonconforming?
Right, so-
And how they got there would be a great thing.
To your point, there is kind of a somewhat perverse unfairness with respect to conforming properties that want to add a nonconformity. That exists not just here in Winchester, but it exists elsewhere. The way this works is if you're nonconforming, Winchester or anywhere else, you can actually get closer to the lot line if you're already in violation, anywhere in the state. You're already closer to the lot line than is allowed, and you want to push closer, it's a special permit. And in that same instance, anywhere else in the state, if you're conforming, you can't touch that. So that's not unique to Winchester and has nothing to do with this bylaw. As to what legally nonconforming, another way of saying it is that that's pre-existing nonconforming. And that's kind of what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Did you have a, did you have a follow-up question, or are you all set? All right. Mr. Leaf has asked to address Town Meeting. He is a resident. In order for him to do so, we need to take a vote of the meeting. All in favor of allowing Mr. Leaf to address the meeting, say aye. Was opposed. The ayes have it. Mr. Leaf, you have three minutes.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Madam Moderator and the entire group here. My name is Richard Leaf. I'm an architect in town. And along with my wife Carolyn, we've actually practiced as Leaf Design Associates for 25 years or so in Winchester. Personally, we've lived in Winchester since 1991, so for over 30 years. We've raised our two children. Here, they went to the public schools. We lived in an 1850s house. In the 1990s, we're in our current home on Winslow Road since 2000 for over 20 years. And basically, I'm a little surprised, I'm going to go off script for a second. I'm a little surprised at the three or four people before me and had no idea that this was going to be so controversial. I'm basically here to express my total and complete support for Article Five. I think, as Diab said, I think at this moment in time, the planning board is trying to preserve the status quo. And I think if Town Meeting and the town want to take a look at zoning and inequities, that's a whole other issue. I will say to you, right now practicing, this is an extremely confusing time for me. We've done about 80 or so special permits in town. We've actually applied for variances three times. I'm at a loss as to how to proceed right now, and this is the first time since we've been in practice over 25 years. So I just, I would like Town Meeting to understand that this is, yes, it's a legal issue, but there are also some other things going on here. And I think maybe the most important thing I want to communicate is that as kind of institutional memory, and this goes back before 2009, Town Meeting, the Board of Selectmen encouraged the ZBA and encouraged the Planning Board, and going back 20-plus years ago, to enable homeowners of older homes to be able to modernize their homes. New kitchens, master suites, family entries, family rooms, mudrooms, one-car garages, two-car garages, whatever seemed to make sense that was viable and feasible for a property. And at my end, I've long believed, and I based my career on a belief that I think it's really good to preserve older homes. And I think most of the people here would say the same thing. And I also believe it's really unfortunate every time an old house is torn down and ends up in a landfill. So there's a lot of legal discussions here which are way above my pay grade. But I want to say to you that we've applied for zoning relief many, many times. We do about four or five special permit projects a year, again, going back to the late 90s. And that includes going to the ZBA. It includes going to the Historic Commission. It includes going to the Design Review Committee. It includes going to the Planning Board, and then ultimately to the ZBA. And they're the board with jurisdiction. And it's a pretty exhausting process, and there's a lot of people these days who are weighing in. And I think there's a lot of very well-intentioned people who are weighing in on the process. So it's not like going for a special permit is a slam dunk. So I don't want Town Meeting to think that just because somebody can go for a special permit, they don't automatically get it. The zoning board has its right to make comments, to make suggestions. The Design Review Committee is doing that these days. The Historic Commission can, as can the Planning Board.
Mr. Leaf, you've reached your three minutes.
Can I have 30 seconds?
Go ahead.
I just want to express that if zoning makes it too difficult for homeowners to improve their homes, it then will make it easier and more likely that homes will be torn down, and builders and developers will come in and put up nice, big, buy-right homes. And I think it's extremely important that we try to enable the homeowners of really old houses that were built on really small lots that predate zoning to be able to improve, update, and modernize their homes. And I am so grateful to the Planning Board for even trying to get this language clarified. And I really hope Town Meeting will vote in favor of Article Five. And thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Further on the question?
I'm Mar Sullivan, Precinct One. I can't speak to the current practice of what the building department is doing or what the special permits have been, but I have read the bylaw, the existing bylaw, and I've read the case law. I've read the Dedrick case. I've read blogs about the case law. And our existing bylaw is consistent with Massachusetts law right now. We don't have to change a thing. It's clear. And my question actually is through you, Madam Moderator, to Town Council. If we were to change 3.5.5, what does that do to 3.5.4, which clearly says that any new nonconformity requires a variance?
Thank you. Town Council, can you please provide information on by changing Section 3.5.5, what that does to Section 3.5.4 of the zoning bylaws for the town of Winchester?
And it's an excellent question. It does nothing technically because 3.5.4 applies in every instance other than a single and two-family structure, and it will continue to apply there. So whether it be multifamily or commercial, in terms of expansions and new nonconformities, it's a different standard. That's not different than if we had no bylaw at all because the law under the zoning act, Chapter Forty Eight, treats single and two-family structures very differently than they do commercial in terms of when a variance or a special permit would be required.
May I have a follow-up? Because 3.5.4 doesn't carve out houses. It doesn't even refer to 3.5.5. So anyone, if you had two houses side by side, and one of them was over the side setback by five feet, but it looked the same from the street, the conforming house on the left would be able to build an addition that strays over the back setback by five feet, and would not be able to. They would have to get a variance, while the house on the right that is over the side setback could only go by special permit. So that doesn't seem fair. They were treating houses in the same zone very differently.
We're going to pull up Section 3.5.4.
Thank you.
Do you have your book?
I don't. If I may, Madam Moderator?
Planning Board, do you have your zoning books? Yeah, so could you follow up on Section 3.5.4 and how it impacts or does not impact single and duplex, which is two-unit structures, residential only?
The relationship between 3.5.4 and 3.5.5 is essentially the same as the relationship between parallel sentences in Chapter Forty Eight, Section Six. And here, as a typical rule of statutory construction, the narrow is going to control the general. The narrow here is in 3.5.5 is that applies, so special treatment there applies to single and two-family structures. And as I mentioned previously, 3.5.4 is the more residual general rule that applies to everything else.
But the problem with that, 3.5.4 is fine to be general when it was the only thing in 3.5- in 3.5.5, didn't have that new language about new nonconformities, but once you add that, you have to also change 3.5.4 so that the two work together, because that's how they were designed to work in the first place.
So I'm...
You can, you, go ahead.
I'm going to, I think he, he, within any other case. So our position as your legal counsel has been and remains that any court reviewing in any other case is going to interpret that as meaning "in any other case." So as it applies to single and two-family structures, 3.5.5 already has the carve-out that we're just trying to clarify now, not change, as has been referenced, but just to clarify, because "in any other case" is fairly straightforward in our view as counsel, and we do a lot of pre-existing nonconforming cases, dozens a year.
Yeah, that is a fundamental disagreement, because I don't read those words the same way. Thank you.
Ms. Meister?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to take a motion to indefinitely postpone.
One moment, please.
Did I dismiss the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, indefinitely postpone, is that what she's saying? Did she get a second? Yes.
Can you please identify yourself by name for the clerk?
Bill McPadden, Precinct 7.
And the second?
Thank you.
Thank you. So for new town meeting members who are not familiar with what just happened, is a member made a motion to indefinitely postpone, I believe, which essentially, in layman's terms, is kills it. So we won't be voting on it. But to do that, it requires a two-thirds vote, according to our guidelines, and at this point, if you could, it is debatable, so we will go into debate on the motion to indefinitely postpone. Proponent of the article, of the motion, if you had a reason for doing that, if you want to come to the meet, and we will only be talking about why we should indefinitely
Once again, Bill McPadden, Precinct 7, thank you, Madam Moderator. So here we are debating this amongst lawyers who can't agree. I can only imagine what the other town meeting members are feeling here. We have no town planner, right? We need some people to help us full-time shepherd this thing through. We, you know, we're sitting here guessing as to what something might be. We'll sit here all night and debate this. It's time to cut this, have the parties all get together, get a town planner in full-time, and help this person and help the town shepherd it through in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the sponsor on the motion to indefinitely postpone?
I would urge you to vote against this motion. This is an existing problem where we have two parts of town government which disagree. We need to resolve this. We need to resolve this with the least harm done. So, and in comment, in response to the comments about needing a town planner, this process of 3.5.5 was actually initiated by our former town planner in conjunction with town council. He was very much in favor of this. So I would urge you not to indefinitely postpone. I think we need to resolve this. Thank you.
Select board, do you have a recommendation for town meeting on indefinitely postponing? Do you need a moment?
The select board, with four people voting to not support the motion to indefinitely postpone, we agree it needs to be resolved, and one abstention.
Any town meeting members who would like to, questions or comments regarding indefinitely postponing? Yes, you may. Go ahead, as a town meeting member, go ahead.
Thanks. As a town meeting member, I will just simply point out that before Brian left, this is something that was near and dear to his heart that he started and asked town council to take over after he left as a town planner. So he felt strongly this needed to be resolved, and, you know, it was creating problems for applicants, and that's how we're here today.
Thank you. Mr. Deering, do you need a mic sent to you?
No. Just a quick one. Just an observation. We've got two lawyers here, they kind of agree on the subject, it's very complex. And 192 of us are not experts in it, and they need more time to get all the information. It is a complex issue, and I don't think it's going to be settled this quickly.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to move the vote.
There's a motion to move the vote. It ends all debate, and it goes to immediately voting to move the vote to indefinitely postpone. It stops all conversation on the topic until we vote. To move the vote requires a two-thirds vote. If you could get your clickers out, that would be great. Can you please, Mr. Deering, you were the one who did it? No. Who did it?
Jeffrey Dean, Precinct 2.
Can you say it again, please?
Jeffrey Dean, Precinct 2.
Jeffrey Dean, I made a motion to move the vote. Is there a second? Can you please identify yourself?
Michael Creed, Precinct 8.
Thank you very much. All right, so if you could get your clickers out. What we are voting on is to move the vote. It gives the meeting the ability to vote it right away. It requires two-thirds votes. We are voting to move the vote, which means to then take on the vote to indefinitely postpone. It requires a two-thirds vote. Get your clickers out. Is there a point of order?
This is moving the vote on whether or not we indefinitely postpone.
Yes.
Closing the debate.
It's closing, it's to close the debate on moving the vote, closes the debate so that we can then vote on indefinitely postponing. It requires a two-thirds vote of the body. Could you cancel all questions or comments? So a yes means you are in favor of closing the discussion on indefinitely postponement of vote. No means you are not in favor, and you may proceed with your voting. The light is on. While you're voting, Tom Clark has...
Hi, folks. While you're voting, I just want to remind folks that we had a very late day of photocopying some of the finance report. So my staff is going to be handing out a letter that goes along with the finance report. When you signed in tonight, you picked up a lavender-colored finance report. That meets the seven-day rule. This document goes with it. So I'm going to have Shannon, Sarath, and Linda come through the aisle and just pass those down, please, so that we meet the criteria of seven days.
Where do we have, 112? Okay. 143 having voted, 96 required to pass, 112 in affirmative, 31 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the vote is now moved, is closed, and we are now moving on to vote to indefinitely postpone Article 5. It is moved and seconded that we indefinitely postpone Article 5. A vote yes will indefinitely postpone Article 5. A vote no will return us back to the debate and the questions and comments from town meeting members. Wait for the green light. Please use your clickers. A two-thirds vote is required. My apologies, it's actually a majority vote that is required to kill Article 5. With a civil majority required, 55 in affirmative, 84 in the negative, the motion to indefinitely postpone does not pass, and we will continue to the questions and comments and from town meeting members. I believe next we have in line Ms. Meister and then Ms. Allison thereafter. Ms. Meister, thank you.
Is it on?
Yep.
Sound to luck, okay. Morning, Meister, Precinct 3. I did serve for 21 years, seven terms, on the planning board, so I've seen a lot of zoning, and I've seen, I was on the board, in fact, in 2009, when we re-cotified the zoning bylaw. And I will say that the 3.5.5 is, I've got it in my hand, it's the first page of the state statute. They're the same. It's the same exact idea, or it's actually same language in many respects. It's about how if you have a, the first section is about grandfathering, basically, if you have a nonconformity, and, meaning it's probably a side yard setback, it could be a rear yard setback. It could be a height, though, too. We have a 40-foot height requirement now, or maximum now. Maybe it's an old house that goes really high, but that's it. And if you have a nonconformity and you're there, you can not only keep your nonconformity, but you can extend your nonconformity. And actually, you can, if the house you want to demolish, you can reconstruct with the same freedom. It's pretty huge, extending a nonconformity. So you've got this sunroom, it's in the side yard, you can add a second story. You're fine. You do need to get a special permit, but that leads to another point. Special permits are overwhelmingly granted. There's a desire to meet the needs of the community. There's a long history, again, I said on the planning board, we got the, you know, we understood what the recommendations were. We made recommendations to the zoning board, we saw the results. It's like 99% of them are approved. Yes, it's another step, but it means you have a nonconformity, and your neighbors get to come in and see, what are you doing with that side yard setback, which might be five feet away from the property line? It's not unreasonable. Now, if we add this potential, which is not in the state statute, it's not in, and if you've got a phone there, or an iPad or something, you might look for it, it's the state statute, 48, Chapter 48, Section 6. If we go beyond that as a town meeting and add this ability to put in new nonconformities, a second nonconformity, and we have a nonconformity already, wow, bingo, you can do a lot. That's not just adding on within your backyard or your side back, side yard, that's going into the setback. That's really tight. And in some of our neighborhoods, that's 15 feet. So you can go, what up, five feet from the setback? You can go really close. You can go really high. It's all up to the zoning board, and the zoning board members do change over time. So it's really a, it's hot luck. In the same time, if you are in a, on a conforming lot, you own a house that the lot's conforming, your house is conforming, you can't do any of this. The zoning bylaws are hard and fast. That's under the state law. It's under Chapter 48, Section 6. So what you end up with is, maybe the next-door neighbor, they're able to go big, and you can only go a certain, stay within the envelope, what we call the envelope, the side yard setbacks and the height. You cannot go for that special permit. So we end, I'd love to see this mapped all over town.
Ms. Meister, you've reached your three minutes?
Okay. So it's not fair, basically. We have properties that are going to end up with rights that others of you will not have. Zoning's meant to be fair. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion to move the vote. Requires a two-thirds vote. It ends all at this time. The questions or comments of those who are in line, give us one minute while we get electronic voting up and running. Can you identify your name and precinct, please? And who was the second?
Nixon, Precinct 1.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Mr. Leo, thank you both of you.
Not in Disney.
He's got a name tag.
I wish I were in Disney.
He has a name tag, just in case. It says "not in Disney." Okay. A motion to move the vote requires two-thirds of town meeting. A vote in the affirmative will go to immediately voting on Article 5. 143 having voted, we need 96 in the affirmative to pass. There are 89 in the affirmative and 54 in the negative. The motion does not pass. We return on the motion of Article 5. Ms. Allison?
Samantha Allison, Precinct 3. I rise to offer two thoughts. One is some perspective as a homeowner who recently went through this process. I have an existing nonconforming 1928 home on a relatively interesting lot, and we wanted to add a new nonconformity and went through the special permit process. I just wanted to offer some comfort to any town meeting members who are concerned that the special permit process is too easy and will allow anything and everything to happen. Let me personally attest, it was more painful than the recent colonoscopy that I experienced, and took a lot longer. So if you think the prep for that is bad, try prepping for the ZBA, with all due respect to the services that you provide. It's not that easy. There's a lot of discussion, you know, my neighbors all were supportive, and there was still a lot of discussion. So I just wanted to offer some reassurance that it's not going to be like wild and crazy if we say yes to this, number one. Number two, with all due respect to all the lawyers in the room, some of whom are my friends, we pay town council for a reason, and at some point, we need to, you know, kind of make a call here and figure out what we're going to do. So just thought I would share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Further on the question?
Thank you. Hi. I'm Casey Bauer, Precinct 8, and I'd just like to remind everyone that Winchester has really restrictive zoning bylaws, and a lot of the nonconforming properties were once conforming, and they keep getting, you know, out of conformity, because we change the bylaws to make them more restrictive. And I just wanted to make this general point. There's been some concern that, you know, it would be unfair if now it were possible. It's actually always, it's apparently in practice been possible, but that some nonconforming properties should get a little bit easier access to this not very easy process, as Ms. Allison has pointed out. I've been there too. out. I've been there, too. But I think that it would be smart to clarify the rule, clarify the bylaw so that it matches what has been the practice. And then maybe we even consider doing more to make it easier for people to not sell their house or and move away or rip it down and put in something big and modern and maybe not as attractive to their neighbors. So I just want to throw that out there as a general point. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Further on the questions, stage left, Mike.
Good evening. Hi, Jennifer Hayfley, Precinct 7. I hear the difference in lawyers in the room. I hear the difference in members here. I did want to point out that there is additional language in the text that says, it goes on to say, "where it determines that proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental." So there is some kind of additional language around what's being added. However, I'm still on the fence. So I was wondering, I'm not sure who to direct this to, planning board or someone. Could you give an example of an application that, under the current wording, would go through the variance process and, under the proposed wording, would very clearly go under the special permit process? Or if you can give an example of what led to this proposed change in the first place? What example of an application led to this? Thank you.
Yep. To the planning board, could you please provide an example of... Please provide an example of how the language... Impacts. Do you want to do that one first?
Yeah.
Okay. You please answer the second question. Through me.
The second question, which is why this arose? I believe that was your second question?
If you can give an example of what led to it.
Yes. So can you... The history of how this arose to be...
The history, I think, actually, town council's much better at that. This arose, I think, because the ZBA was looking very carefully at the zoning bylaws and did an analysis of this particular one and they brought it to the attention, I believe. I don't know. I will pass on to town council for that. But I do have an example of something which is allowed by the current bylaw, I should say, the traditional interpretation, which would not be allowed by the new interpretation. So for instance, we have here a lot which is nonconforming because it's too small, 6,000 square feet in an RG, which is 6,500 square feet. The house is very close to the front setback, so that dash line is the setback, the big, the heavy line around there is the lot line. This house wants to put a covered entryway on the front of it, which you've seen that picture to the right. But in order to do so, let's say they have to put in a front step, it has to meet code, it has to be a certain distance. In order to do so, that front entryway is going to cross over that setback line and that's a new nonconformity. Now, this is a really minor addition. We're not talking about, you know, acres of new stuff. This is just someone trying to put a simple thing on the front of their house so they stay dry when they open up their door. This is allowed now through a special permit. But because it introduces a new nonconformity, it would, if we don't fix this and if the alternate interpretation goes through, require a variance, which they would not get because this lot does not meet any of the criteria for which you could get a variance. So this is the sort of thing we're talking about. We're not talking about people building, you know, wings off of their houses. We're talking about people on really constrained lots trying to put in modest improvements to their homes. I think this, perhaps we're losing slightly. Anyway, I'm sorry. I've got on my soapbox.
Did you have a follow-up question or were they all answered? Thank you very much.
Is it possible to ask a point of information in response to the chairs of the planning board?
You may ask a point of information, yeah.
Yeah. Through you, Madam Moderator, isn't it also true that a much larger nonconformity, such as a whole nother floor or a whole addition into the side back setback, would also then go through the special permit process and not variance under the new law? Thank you.
Thank you.
It would not be any different than exists now. Under the change to Section 355, you would maintain the exact same process as has been going on since 2009. And as one of the earlier people mentioned, the ZBA has great discretion in determining whether or not the new nonconformity is substantially greater... I'm going to get the words wrong. More detrimental. So they can simply say, "It's too big." Boom, it's done.
The exact language is where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. Correct. Correct. As of right now, it is not by variance. It is by special permit. And what has been said by many of the members is that it is in... There are two that are in conflict, two different entities in the town who are in conflict with it. And the planning board is not one of those entities. They're trying to give you the language of the current process. Are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Please proceed.
Michelle McCarthy, Precinct 7. I'm urging everyone to vote no against this. This is a massive zoning change. This isn't a simple thing. This is really big. Zoning seeks to create very clear and predictable guidelines that everyone understands, that property owners understand, that your neighbors and the butters owners understand. And, you know, zoning really aims to treat property owners the same. By changing this, you're saying to your direct or butter, "Oh, you can do this because you're nonconforming and you can't." That's not what zoning is about. This is a massive change. Thank you to Mr. McGonigal earlier. I did have that question. How many people are coming to us with this? I'm on the historic commission, I'm only speaking as a member, but I haven't had people come to us saying, "We can't do this and we can't do that." I've also had to go through a special permit on my property. It wasn't that bad. You meet all your neighbors, people talk about it, you... Everyone, you have to go on a couple Zooms. This is way blown out of proportion. And I think Mr. McGonigal's report, you might want to pull that up against... Again, I think he said 47 people sought a permit and 43 were granted. This is a massive zoning change and I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
I believe that town meeting is pretty much ready for the vote, but I just gave a statement that I wanted the building commissioner just to confirm that this is the current process that he is taking. He's nodding his head, but can you stand up and please answer the question? I want to make sure that people know that. Thank you. I believe town meeting is ready to vote. If you could please take your clickers out. As this is a zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote to be adopted. The vote before you is to amend Article 3.5.5 as written in your motion booklets. A vote yes is in favor of Article 5. A vote no is to vote not in favor of the motion before you. You'll be given 30 seconds. Again, this is for Article 5 to amend it, Section 3.5.5 of the zoning bylaws for the town of Winchester. Yeah, they're not ready yet. The light goes on when they're ready. Oh, they're ready. 139 having voted.